Okay. All right, now, a public comment. And this is for anyone who would like to talk about anything that's not on our agenda. And I would ask that you keep it to three minutes. We do have the timer up, and so as long as there's a green light, you're good to go. When the yellow comes on, you have a minute to wrap it up, and then when the red comes on, you're done. So, appreciate you respecting that. And so, has anybody would like to get up and comment on anything that's not on our agenda today? Seeing none, do we have any confirmation on Tahoe yet?
No attendees.
Okay, great, then we can move on. So, closing public comment. Consent agenda, we only have one item, and Larry can't vote on it. So, it's with regards to the minutes from our last meeting, so is it...
I move to approve the consent item.
Thank you, Anders. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, and we got a second. Thank you, Richard. The roll call.
I have a first by Commissioner Haughey and a second by Commissioner Rokucci. Mr. Haughey?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Rokucci?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison?
I'm staying.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now on to our 10:05 item. Sorry that it's way past that. We did just send a consent, so we're good. So, Nick is going to go over Kemper Woods for us.
Good morning. Nick Trufal, Planning Services Division. So, the item I have before you today is the Kemper Woods Extension of Time. The applicant requests an approval of a two-year extension for a tentative subdivision map and conditional use permit. The planning commission originally approved the project back in June 2006 and also adopted the mitigated negative declaration. Since approval, the project has been granted several automatic extensions by the state through various senate bills, and the planning commission granted its first two-year extension back in 2016. So, the project is located in North Auburn and is in Auburn-Bomberd Community Plan Area. It's just southeast of Kemper Road and Bean Road. Access to the site is from Bean Road from a planned single roadway. This is the tentative map that was approved by your commission in 2006, allowed for 23-lot single-family residential subdivision on 24 acres, and included four common open-space lots, a small playground area, and a water detention basin. With the 2016 extension of time, the planning commission approved a slightly revised tentative map that was determined to be in substantial conformance with the original 2006 map approval. It only included minor revisions, were reducing the number of open-space lots from four to three, since the detention basin, the water detention basin, was relocated to another existing open-space lot on-site. Also included removal of the need for a sewer lift station on the northeast corner, since the project would now connect to the existing sewer line on Kemper Road. So, overall, the applicant has demonstrated due diligence, implementing the project through acquiring their federal 404 permit and working to complete a soil remediation assessment. Therefore, staff recommends the planning commission approve the two-year extension.
Thank you, Nick. Questions for Nick?
Actually, one quick question, Nick. Why did the noise conditions move from one location in the conditions of approval to another? Just curious.
Sure. So, originally, the noise was handled by Marvin L. Health Division, and now that's actually handled by the planning department, so it's been shifted over.
Thank you.
Nick, I have a question for you. I'm not sure, it seems like when we had a discussion about this before, that there was an issue with regards to a sewer lift station that was going to be rather expensive for the developer to put in. Am I remembering the right project? Is that correct?
Well, there was a lift station that was proposed originally for the project, and then later on, it was determined that they could do a connection to Kemper Road to existing sewer line.
Without the lift station.
Right, so that was removed.
Because as I understood at the time, that was going to be so expensive that it was going to make the project unfeasible. At least, that's what I was hearing.
Right.
So, I'm glad to hear that's not an obstacle anymore, because, you know, I've been, and I know that some of the other commissioners have kind of questioned, we've had a lot of projects come back before us for extensions of time that have been in play for the last eight to 10 years, and obviously, the downturn stopped some of them. But, I'm still not seeing them move fast enough at this point. You would think that, you know, if you can't make it work during a market like we've got right now, when are you ever going to make it work financially, the bottom line? So, if that lift station was still an issue, I would say, how are you ever going to make that work? So, I'm glad to hear they were able to resolve it.
Yes, sir.
And any other questions? I guess not, so we'll let the public weigh in if they would like to. Okay, thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
And I would ask, as during the same, during the public comment, that anybody who would like to get up and address this, and I guess I could give the applicant an opportunity to step up unless they want, would like to add anything to Nick's comments. Would the applicant like to say something?
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity. Appreciate it. Thank you, Nick. Appreciate the presentation. Just appreciate your support on the project. We are excited to say...
Could you give us your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mike Matroni. I'm the applicant on the project. We are excited to say that we are an escrow on the property, with a developer and a builder in tow, so we're hopeful that this property will be sold early next year, and dirt will be turning sometime next, in 2019.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. And now, we'll let the public weigh in if they would like to, if they have questions or comments on this. And again, I would ask you to respect the three-minute limitation. So, would anybody like to comment on this? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public comment.
Before you do that, Tahoe is all clear. No one's in Tahoe.
Still clear. Thank you. Not sure they'd want to comment on this one, anyway. But, thank you for that. I'll bring it back to the commission for either questions or action.
I'll make a motion to approve the two-year extension of time with the findings and conditions of approval as recommended by the staff in the staff report.
Okay. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second. Roll call, please, Sue.
I have a first by Mr. Haughey, a second by Mr. Sevison.
Whoa.
Mr. Haughey?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Rokucci?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to our 10:10 item now, on the general plan, community plan amendments to incorporate for the, well, a whole lot of areas, for the updated bicycle plan. So, Crystal, I'm not going to read all of that. I'll let you deal with that.
I'll fill you in here. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. I'm Crystal Jacobson with the Placer County Planning Services Division, and with me today is Stephanie Holloway with the Department of Public Works and Facilities, who was the lead on the regional bikeway plan. And so, what I'm going to do today is present on the community plan amendments, but turn it over briefly for Stephanie, just to touch on the bikeway plan itself and provide you with an overview on that. So, just by way of some background, in June of 2017, the county and the Placer County Transportation Planning Agency initiated an update to the 2002 BikeWay Plan, so the regional BikeWay Plan, it was a Placer County unincorporated document. This effort was supported by a Caltrans Regional Planning Assistance Program grant. The county originally adopted the BikeWay Plan in 2002, consistent with the State of California Bicycle Transportation Act. The BikeWay Plan identifies bikeway improvements proposed within, again, the unincorporated portion of the county, but also integrates planning efforts of the six cities to create a coordinated regional bikeway system. In June of 2018, the PCTPA accepted or approved that final regional BikeWay Plan, and then it was accepted by Caltrans thereafter, so that they closed out the grant funding for that. And then, following that, our board on October 9th adopted the regional BikeWay Plan. And so, the purpose of today's item is to ensure consistency with our community plans, so we want to make sure that they're consistent with this recent update. I will point out that the amendments are really minor in nature. They include refinements aimed at accurately referencing and reflecting the plan, and it's adopted bikeway network for each community in Placer County. So, what I'm going to do now is turn it over to Stephanie, just to talk about what the plan is, and then she'll hand it back to me to talk about the amendments.
Thank you, Crystal. Good morning. Stephanie Holloway with Public Works. So, yeah, Crystal's asked me to go over the BikeWay Plan, which I know you all have a copy of. So, just to give you some background, in 2002, the county adopted a bicycle master plan. This master plan did identify a regional system of bikeway improvements for commuters and recreational cyclists throughout the county, from Tahoe to Western Placer. It also identified a list of priority projects that were consistent with the bicycle transportation account. So, that was the Caltrans program at the time that we sought after funding for these types of improvements. So, a lot has changed since 2002, not just the date, but 16 years have passed. We've incorporated, you know, a lot of population growth within our county. The cities have actually adopted their own bikeway master plans in many cases. Many community plans, specific plans, developments in the area have also prioritized and incorporated bicycle improvements that we want to recognize with this update. We've had a significant interest in our county in cycling, so we've seen an increase in the amount of cyclists on the roadway. But most importantly is really the change in the state funding. We've moved from the bicycle transportation account structure to what Caltrans now calls the Active Transportation Program. So, little different programs. We want to make sure that this document and our future funding through that program are in alignment. So, the update focuses on our best practices throughout the industry. We really are trying to prioritize greater width of those facilities on high-speed roadways in the interest of safety, while also looking at incorporating additional climbing lanes in the foothill areas, recognizing the speed differential between vehicles and uphill cyclists, again, under the guise of safety. Providing and prioritizing connections between cities through the county is a priority in the plan, and really looking to promote those commute and potential future commute connections between cities and population areas. We're also promoting, obviously, the grant opportunities through that Active Transportation Program. And then, lastly, looking to support the county's efforts on the sustainability plan. You know, these bicycle infrastructure improvements are going to be one of a number of tools that the county will be looking to in the future to reduce our greenhouse gas throughout the county. So, just to focus a little bit on community engagement and give you an idea of our outreach there, we did launch a campaign back in June of 2017 through an online survey. We had 795 respondents of that survey, so pretty good response. We got some very detailed answers to seven questions, survey questions. We also provided them with an interactive web map that they could put specific comments and concerns on the map specifically, and we've tailored the plan to address those concerns, recognizing that we have, you know, different demographics throughout the county. We also met with a bicycle advisory committee that was just recently formed. These are bicycle riders and advocates in the industry. Some common themes that we heard were improving those facilities on our narrow roadways. A lot of our rural roadways have minimal shoulders, so we're looking to try to promote bicyclists in those areas. Roadway and shoulder maintenance, so some kind of, some current best practices in our maintenance, they were looking to improve those areas. Looking to, again, provide regional connections between Auburn, Folsom, Grass Valley, and even jurisdictions outside of Placer. And then, you know, prioritizing the existing gaps, where we have, you know, infrastructure that picks up and drops off, trying to prioritize that for a continuous network. And then, lastly, you know, but not least, prioritizing safety in the plan. So, just to give you a little tutorial on the infrastructure that's in the BikeWay Plan, I'll talk to you about these different types of facilities. So, the Class 1 facility that you see in the upper left there is really a shared-use path. It's typically separated from the roadway, and so you'll hear the term "shared use" or "Class 1." These are improvements that actually cross over into our planning efforts with the Parks BikeWay, sorry, the Parks and Trails Master Plan. The Class 2 is an on-street facility there in the upper right. You can see there, we've added a buffered bike lane. This is kind of a new infrastructure improvement in the industry, where we provide separation between the vehicle and the bike. So, you'll hear the term "buffered bike lane," but really, the Class 2 is a designated route on the road for bicyclists. The Class 3 in the lower left there is an on-road route, so there's no specific, as there is in the Class 1, there's no specific, you know, roadway width designated for bicyclists, but we do promote awareness of bicyclists. These are preferred routes by bicyclists, and so we're providing the necessary striping and signage to provide visibility for them. And the last is the Class 4. This is a fairly new facility throughout the industry and for Placer County. This is what we call a separated bikeway. It's not physically separated, but it is separated from the roadway by barriers or bollards, as you can see in this picture. Sometimes you'll see them on, you know, the two lanes on one side of the street, sometimes they will be on opposite sides of the street. So, this is kind of a new facility that I'll talk about in a little bit more context here. So, there's three components in the plan, the network, our priority projects list, and then some implementation programs. The existing network is 116 miles of bicycle routes, bicycle lanes. The plan does designate 440 roughly additional, we go up to 440 miles of trails, you know, bikeway trails. So, that's a 400% increase. The majority of that increase you'll see is in our bicycle route, so that Class 3 facility. So, we're looking to promote awareness of bicyclists on the road, that we know that they're already riding. Additionally, we're providing a separate, the network provides that separated Class 4, and again, this is to address higher volumes and higher speeds between those commute connections between cities. Class 2 buffered bike lane represents a smaller increase in our overall system, but it is a new improvement that we've incorporated in the plan for safety. Additionally, we're providing, the plan does provide those regionally significant Class 1s with the shared-use paths. You'll see on your maps, those are the green lines in most cases. So, these trails or these shared-use paths have been brought in from the Parks and Trails Master Plan, planning effort. The intent of the BikeWay Plan is really to address on-road facilities, but recognizing that under the Active Transportation Program, again, that Caltrans funding opportunity, we wanted to make sure that this BikeWay Plan did incorporate other trails that could potentially apply for funding. And again, I just wanted to point out, you know, the numbers that I threw out for the growth in our network don't incorporate all of the planning efforts, all the specific plans and developments that you all have seen and approved. Obviously, a lot of focus is on alternative modes and providing those facilities. So, lot more bicycle network there to come. So, just to go through kind of three areas, this is our western, our western area of the county. I like to refer this as our, kind of our urban-rural interface. You'll see the specific plan areas, and if I can get a pointer here, the specific plan areas are identified here in blue, Placer Vineyards, Regional University, this is the Sunset area, you can also see Bickford Ranch here. So, again, in this area, we're looking to promote connections between communities, between Rockland, Roseville, Lincoln, and we're really focused on a couple of things that have changed in the plan here, and that is our separated Class 4 facility, so I'll just point that out. On Taylor Road here, we have identified a separated Class 4 facility. A large amount of commute traffic actually currently exists, and we heard the desire for more between Auburn and the areas of Loomis and beyond. So, this piece right here on Taylor Road is kind of a critical piece that we heard. Another opportunity for a separated Class 4 is really this, what was old Highway 65, our Sheridan-Lincoln boulevards, we're looking to incorporate kind of a new planning facility between Sheridan and Lincoln there. And then, additional buffered bike lanes, I'll point out a few, Auburn-Folsom Road here, again, high-speed facility, we're looking to incorporate a little bit of extra buffer for those bicyclists that we know are on the road. Sierra College on the north section here between Loomis and Highway 193, again, looking to incorporate a buffered bike lane. And then, in North Auburn, just wanted to point out the additional connections to our regional park facility, so Hidden Falls is here off of Mountain Vernon. So, we're looking to incorporate, you know, additional Class 2 bike lanes that connect from the North Auburn Class 2 network out into the park, so making those regional recreational connections was important, too. And then, moving to the, kind of the middle part or center part of our county, this is more of our rural, predominantly recreational riders at long distances. We're looking to, again, this is kind of where we see most of our growth in the Class 3 or the bicycle route. Many bicycle routes identified here, where we know that bicycle riders prefer, because of the long distances, the climb, the challenge associated with those routes. One other commute opportunity that we added to the plan is here, connecting the area of Meta Vista into Auburn, so we're providing Class 2 bicycle facilities there along those roadways. And then, Forest Hill does provide kind of a unique opportunity, where we've incorporated some downtown improvements here, recognizing that we, you know, have local residents there, multitude of different riders in this area, so we've looked to enhance some of the infrastructure that is identified in the plan for Forest Hill. And then, lastly, into the Tahoe area, again, we're really kind of focused on those regional routes in and out of the basin, Highway 89, 267. I will note, within the basin, you can see here shaded, this is the basin boundary, TRPA has an Active Transportation Plan that they adopted a number of years ago, so we really kind of, you know, point to that plan when we talk about head or bicycle planning in the basin. But these are our main focus routes, Highway 267, 89, and on Highway 89, we're looking to promote the shared-use path along the Truckee River here, so the plan does identify this as one of the priority projects. And then, along 267, we've identified an on-road bike lane along 267 over Brockway Summit. This is a little different scenario here, because there is a Class 1 trail, you can see here in green, that's been planned, but recognizing the deviation of this trail from the actual road, there's many riders who like to stay on the road for different reasons, and so we've identified the future BikeWay, Class 2 bike lane along Highway 267. So, with that, I'll turn it back over to Crystal. I'll be available at the end if you have any additional questions.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you, Stephanie. So, what I'm going to do is just talk about, briefly touch on the community plan amendments that are before your commission today. You can see them listed here. So, in order to ensure consistency, what we did, staff conducted a review of all of our community plans and our general plans, looking at the bikeway network exhibits, the programs and policies outlined in those plans, to see if there was any need for change. And following that review, it was determined that the general plan is actually consistent, so there was no need for a change there. However, we did determine that there were a number of minor text and map amendments needed in these plans that are listed here. I would also like to point out that we did identify some additional changes that are needed in some other community plans, some of which are currently, there's current work programs being processed right now. One is the Sunset Industrial Area Plan, so we'll handle those changes as that plan comes forward. Another is an update to the Granite Bay circulation element, so we'll handle those changes as that plan comes forward. And then, finally, the Meadow Vista Community Plan, that's going to be before your commission, I think, I think it's the fourth, it's scheduled. That one will include some changes related to the BikeWay Plan as well. The changes that are coming forward with Meadow Vista are really related to the streetscape design in downtown Meadow Vista, but we will have some minor amendments related to this plan. And then, finally, they, we did identify some other changes and plans in the Tahoe area, but we determined that those would likely result in a broader scope of work related to the overall bikeway network in Tahoe and multimodal improvements, and so we have determined that we are going to table those until such time that we come in for updates to those plans. So, real quick, I'll just touch on what you'll see in your staff report packet in terms of the changes. You do have the track change versions in your staff report package, but for the Auburn-Bomberd, we are proposing an amendment to the community development and traffic circulation elements. The first is to incorporate reference to the plan, so you'll see a change there, to revise text language to reflect updated bicycle facilities, and then to add the diagram that you see here. So, this is really kind of a subset diagram of what Stephanie was just referring to. And this diagram, I think it's important to note, it really augments the plan, so it doesn't substitute, it doesn't, it's not a change-out of the existing trail plan in the Auburn-Bomberd Community Plan, it is intended to augment that. So, for Dry Creek, it's amendments to the transportation circulation and the parks and recreation elements, again, to incorporate or reference the plan, update the planned bicycle facilities, clarify some design criteria, and then add some new text that is related to the bicycle facilities and locations, and then, again, add this diagram that you see here. For Forest Hill Divide Community Plan, this is the only one where we noticed that there was a need for a policy change. So, the first, the amendment is to the transportation circulation element, again, to reference the plan, but then, there was a policy, Policy 5A 1-4, and a corresponding implementation measure that needed to be changed. So, we eliminated Policy 5A 1-4, and then changed the implementation section. And the purpose for that was that in the updated plan, we call for a different bicycle facility along those stretches of Forest Hill Divide Road, where the topography is really calling for a wider shoulder. So, you're going to see this, what's called a climbing lane. Stephanie touched on that. But it provides a wider shoulder for areas along Forest Hill Road where that topography is steep, and this facility is intended to really provide a safer and more feasible bicycle improvement for cyclists. And really, that is based on feedback that was received from the cycling community. And then, finally, we did add actually two diagrams in Forest Hill, because, I don't know if you've looked at the Forest Hill Divide Community Plan, but the boundary is quite large, so what we did is, there is a diagram that was prepared for the downtown area and then the entire Forest Hill Divide BikeWay Network. For Horseshoe Bar, the amendments are related to the circulation element, again, to reference the plan, clarify some design criteria, adding some text regarding the purpose of bikeway facilities, revising the implementation section to accurately identify where we want to see bikeway locations, and then added this exhibit as well. And this exhibit actually was a replacement, because the old exhibit actually came from the BikeWay Plan, so this was actually the only amendment where we actually have a swap of the diagram. And then, for Sheridan, it's an amendment to the Parks Recreation and Trails element to reference the plan, add some text related to the purpose of the facilities, clarify the design criteria, amend the list of the proposed bikeways that are outlined for Sheridan, and then, again, to add this diagram. And then, the final two, I just want to point out, the OFER and WEAR, Applegate, Clipper Gap Plans are actually called general plans and not community plans, but they do serve as a community plan. And this was where we saw really the kind of really minor changes, where we, all we had to do was incorporate reference to the BikeWay Plan, so there are no diagrams being proposed in these plans. So, with that, Stephanie touched on the outreach, but what I wanted to point out is that the BikeWay Plan had been to almost all of the... So with that, Stephanie touched on the outreach, but what I wanted to point out is that the bikeway plan had been to almost all of the municipal advisory councils, all but Squaw Valley, where there wasn't a lot, there wasn't a lot of change in Squaw Valley. But we did present, I say we, it was Stephanie and the PCTPA presented the plan before all of the MACs for feedback. So in closing, I just want to point out that that bikeway plan is really a policy document presenting a vision for implementation of infrastructure programs and practices that would support biking throughout the unincorporated areas of the county. I would want to point out that the plan itself and the amendments do not propose or commit the county to any actual construction. So they simply just set the stage for future projects to come in. And on that regard, any future construction would have to go through its own project review and CEQA review. So I just wanted to point that out. And then finally, with that, I would just request that your commission forward a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors based on the findings contained in your staff report, the following two items, that the community plan amendments are categorically exempt under CEQA, and then adopt the resolutions contained in your staff report package. And I'd be happy to answer questions, and so would Stephanie.
Thank you, Crystal. Any questions for Crystal or Stephanie?
A couple, I guess, if I could. With the trail system as outlined here, and the, do you have an idea of how much additional right-of-way will need to be acquired, or is most of this intended to go within existing right-of-ways?
I would say that the main, like I said, the majority of the expansion of the network is going to be that Class III facility. So those are road right-of-ways that we already have. The majority of the roadway that we will need to require are the expanded facilities like the Class IV, potentially the buffered bike lanes, we may need some additional right-of-way there. But we did try to prioritize, like on Highway 267, sorry, on Sheridan-Lincoln Boulevard and on Taylor, where we do have actually a significant right-of-way from those old state highways. But we haven't done a detailed analysis of the right-of-way need.
Other question I would have is, and it's probably not planned out at this point, but maybe a request that it does get considered. Because we're putting in a lot of trails, especially in the more rural areas, maybe some consideration to some type of sanitation facilities every now and then would be necessary. I occasionally see a little more of a bike rider than I'd like to. They tend to duck down the side driveways and take care of things that I just assume not witness.
Yeah, I'll say thank you for that. We actually heard that same comment from the Bicycle Advisory Group. And we've been working with the Parks District on a number of locations that we might be able to partner with them on some facilities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I've got one for you, Stephanie. I first want to say I am a strong supporter of cycling as a means of recreation and also commuting. But I am concerned about those that are out on the Class III where we don't really have a designated area for the bikes, that they have to share it with the vehicles. And I think that's a real challenge, and I think you'd have to admit that, in the foothill regions where you have lots of curves and hills. And I, fortunately, I've been, some years back, I was on Dry Creek Road, and I was the first to come on the scene of a person who would, a cyclist had been hit by a car. They'd been sideswiped, the car left, didn't even stop. And the person was laying in the road, and I had, I got out and was helping them. But it really hit home to me how dangerous it is to have both cars and cyclists trying to use the same lane of traffic, especially when you've got, you know, blind hills and blind curves up in the hills here. I think in the flattery areas of Placer County, that's less of an issue, but it certainly is more of an issue up here. So I know you're trying to encourage as much, and obviously looking at where there's bikeways that you're suggesting for Class III on like Mountain Vernon and Wise Road and Dry Creek and other roads that are like that. But it really does cause some, I think, some real friction between vehicles and also riders. And it's just unfortunate, but it is what it is right now. But I just, I just wanted to pass that on, that since I've had a personal experience of having to help somebody on the road who'd been hit, it means a little bit more.
Yeah, I'm sorry to hear that. No, I completely understand your sentiments. I mean, I'm a bicycle rider myself, and I recognize the concerns over safety. You know, the bicycle, I will tell you that the bicycle routes that we've identified, and I think I mentioned it a couple of times, I mean, these are facilities that bicycles are out riding actively today. In fact, a lot of the data that we got to support the network was off of Strofa Data, which is an app that riders use. But yes, recognizing kind of the need for, you know, awareness of those bicycles on the road. The challenge that we have is that a lot of the, a lot of the routes that some of the more experienced riders like to ride are in the foothills where we have limited shoulder, they like the long climbs, as I mentioned, the steep grades, it's a challenge. So they are putting themselves out there, they do make that choice. But we, I definitely understand your concerns over the safety.
Because I know vehicles are trying to avoid them, and at times when there's like a grade again, and they're moving over to accommodate the bicycles, they are obviously over opposing traffic. And if it's in a blind curve or a hill, that's exposing that vehicle to potential danger as well. So it's a really tough situation. And I know to fix it is extremely expensive, and there's right-of-way issues on a lot of these narrow county roads as well.
But I will say, PCTPA has made a commitment, you know, to get awareness out there, you know, to provide education. CHP is out there to provide enforcement. So we are trying to get that message out, but I definitely understand your concern.
Yeah, thank you, Steph.
Thanks.
Now, unless there's any other questions, I'll open it up for the public's comment on this. And I would, again, would ask that you hold your comments to three minutes. So if you could just kind of really focus in on your most critical points that you would like to make. Again, we'll be using the timer. The green is good for two minutes, and then the yellow gives you one minute warning. And then when the red shows up, we'd ask you to wrap up. So would anyone like to comment on this change to the amendments, changes to these various planning areas? Please step forward. Okay, all right, I guess we're not going to have it. So I guess I'm a little bit surprised by that, am I scaring people?
You are, you are, as a matter of fact, on that last question, yes, you are scaring people.
Okay, sorry about that. Well, I thought I was, I didn't say.
You were actually nicer today than.
Yeah, I didn't say you were.
I just have one.
Chairman, real quick, just for the record, no one is in attendance in time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I think I heard that the bicycle plans, when they come into and butt up against the city, they're lined up with the existing city plans, like in City of Roswell has a lot of bicycles routes, and some of them are separated along creeks and stuff, and they're heading out of the city. Are these routes lined up with them when they leave the city and go into county property?
Yeah, and that was one of the, one of the driving forces of updating the plan, is that the cities have, since 2002, the cities have adopted their own plans. And so making sure that our plan is in alignment with their expanded facility.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Stephanie or Crystal? And if not.
Maybe just one, just one comment, and that is, I'm a regular bike rider myself and enjoy going to the American River Trail often. And just a consideration, I think, if the trails are going to connect to that eventually, I think some of the lines do, you might want to consider parking. And at these locations where, particularly if there's going to be a Class I or Class IV designation where folks might have extended rides in these separate trails, how is parking going to be accommodated for folks to come to these locations and have extended parking time? Because I can see sides of roads becoming a problem for some of these areas.
Good point.
I'll maybe defer to the Parks effort related to their Parks and Trails master plan. You know, the on-road facilities are really, in my mind, although I do drive to certain locations to ride, they don't typically warrant that type of behavior. So I definitely can bring that comment forward to our Parks Department. I'm sure that they've incorporated that in their plan already, so, but thank you.
All right, unless there's any other questions, action would you like to take?
I'd like to move that we approve, should I read, we're going to do these separately.
We need to do them separately, and start with one.
Find the proposed community plan amendments to be categorically exempt under CEQA Guidelines, Section 15262 feasibility and planning study.
There's a second?
Second.
Okay, so we'll call.
And that's a recommendation to the board.
Right.
I have a first by Commissioner Hersog and a second by Commissioner Rokuchi.
Yes.
Mr. Howgie.
Yes.
Mr. Hersog.
Yes.
Mr. Rokuchi. Mr. Sevison.
Yes.
Mr. Moss.
Yes.
Mr. Nader.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll just continue, but I'd like to make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors that we adopt resolutions amending the Auburn Bowman Community Plan, Dry Creek, West Placer Community Plan, Forest Hill Divide Community Plan, Horseshoe Bar Henry Community Plan, OFER General Plan, Sheridan Community Plan, and the Weimar Applegate Clipper Gap General Plan to ensure consistency with the updated Placer County Regional Bikeway Plan.
Second.
I'm moving on second, if we'll call two.
I have a first by Mr. Hersog and a second by Mr. Rokuchi. Mr. Howgie.
Yes.
Mr. Hersog.
Yes.
Mr. Rokuchi.
Yes.
Mr. Sevison.
Yes.
Mr. Moss.
Yes.
Mr. Nader.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Crystal and Stephanie, for that report. Okay, now we move on to our 10:30 item, which we're, okay. Do, seem to be losing some of our commissioners at the moment, so. Can we take like two minutes here? Appreciate it till we get some of our commissioners back. Appreciate it. Emily, sorry.
I have a question of the staff real quickly. Were these to be turned in, or are these a document we can keep? That's what I thought, wanted to make sure, thank you. Yes?
Well, I'm sure Jeff's going to be here in a minute. Emily, let's go ahead, because we're obviously running way behind schedule today, so. Appreciate that. Tiny houses.
Good morning.
Guys, we're going to start.
So today, we're bringing forward the most recent version of the tiny house zoning text amendment. And we're here because last August, the Board of Supervisors adopted the housing strategy to address the need for a mix of housing types. And allowing tiny houses was just one of those types and one component of that housing strategy. Right now, our county has mostly predominantly single-family housing, so we are trying to increase the diversity of housing types and prices so that we can give people a choice of housing options. So what is a tiny house? It is not an RV. And so this diagram is designed to differentiate the two uses. It does, tiny houses do not look like RVs, and we recognize that societally, people do not treat tiny houses like RVs. Most people do live in them full-time. Our proposed definition of a tiny house states that a tiny house is a separate, independent living quarters, no larger than 400 square feet. It includes your basic functional areas to support daily routines, such as your kitchen, your sleeping area, and your bathroom. And it is mounted on a wheeled trailer chassis. It is also designed and built to look like a conventional building structure using conventional building materials, so it is thus architecturally distinct from traditional mobile homes and recreational vehicles. Also, it is licensed and registered to tow legally under the California Department of Motor Vehicles. And so these photos show, this slide shows photos of actual tiny houses to demonstrate that people are really living in them. And they do include all of the basic necessities for living. And while tiny houses may not be everybody's first choice, they are definitely a first choice for many people. And the reasons are is because there are many benefits to them. Due to their small size, they are by nature less expensive. They are transportable, so people can move their house with them when they decide to move. And they serve several demographics. They're useful for singles, families, retired communities, workforce housing, and traveling professionals. I've had people contact me ranging from millennials to young families with babies on the way and people planning for retirement, telling me that they do want to live in a tiny house in Placer County. And another benefit is that they do expedite the building and installation process because they can be built elsewhere or on-site, and they could be rolled onto a site. So under today's zoning ordinance, small houses are allowed, but they must meet building code and they must be on permanent foundation. So right now, we could see a 400-square-foot stick-built house as a primary or a secondary dwelling. Although our zoning ordinance does not specifically call out tiny houses right now, they would be allowed in certain locations, certain zone districts, and for limited timeframes. So those would be incidental camping, they would be allowed in RV parks and mobile home parks, or as caretaker and employee housing. However, a 400-square-foot house on a trailer chassis would not be allowed in residential zones under today's code. So this CTA has undergone several revisions in the past few months, and so I'll go over some of those notable changes. We removed the "on wheels" language to clarify that people could remove the wheels to the tiny house, they do not need to stay on. And we did remove the use of tiny houses as primary dwellings as part of this CTA. That use will be included in the Housing Strategy and Development Plan CTA. And that CTA is intended to look at a broader set of zoning code revisions aimed to support diverse housing developments. That CTA also is exploring other code revisions related to tiny houses, such as the provision of tiny house communities. So we do expect that to continue forward. Staff is currently developing that CTA. Staff also included additional text to specifically state that zoning clearance would be required for tiny houses. We do that for every other type of residential structure. And during that process, all applicable county fees would be collected. Staff also removed the reference to the caretaker and employee housing definition that was included in a previous version because staff determined that under the existing ordinance, tiny houses could be allowed right now as caretaker and employee housing. So this CTA proposes that tiny houses would be allowed anywhere that secondary dwellings are allowed today. I will note that CCNRs are in many of our subdivisions throughout the county, so they may restrict their use. And we have been getting an average of about 15 new second dwelling units each year. So it could be the case that by allowing tiny houses, that could be more attractive to homeowners, and that number of second dwelling units could go up. Tiny houses would also have to meet zoning clearance and land use regulations, so things like your height and setback would be checked. They would have to connect to county-approved water supply and sewage disposal. They would have to be designed to look like a conventional residential structure. And they would be registered with the DMV. The DMV requires that they're registered annually as trailer coaches. And I will say that the DMV license fees take into account the total value of the trailer and the structure attached to it, so therefore it would not be assessed in our... by the county's assessor's office. Tiny houses would also need to comply with the American National Standards Institute and the National Fire Protection Agency standards. And these are typical standards used for RVs, and they are used by many tiny house manufacturers. So this slide is to show that we do recognize the importance of maintaining residential character. We do want to allow different styles of architecture, but that tiny houses must be designed to look like a conventional house. The county's general plan supports innovative housing policy, and the general plan housing element states that the county shall encourage a range of housing types, and the county shall facilitate expanded housing opportunities that are affordable to the workforce. So this CTA is in line with those policies. The CTA also is in line with the county's current housing priorities, as you may have heard Shawna Purvines describe in some of her presentations. And those are to increase the availability of a mix of housing types in the county and to improve the county's overall employment growth by assisting county employers in reducing critical labor shortages of skilled workers that are in part driven by a lack of housing. And to potentially reduce vehicle miles traveled by allowing people to live closer to their workplaces. So at our Planning Commission workshop on tiny houses this past summer, we did get a request to provide some more details on the cost of tiny houses. This table compares the cost of a 400-square-foot stick-built house and a 400-square-foot tiny house, both as secondary dwellings. So based on an estimate of $150 per square foot, which is a typical stick-built construction cost, the stick-built structure is likely to cost close to $83,000 plus utilities, whereas the tiny house cost varies more, so it could be anywhere from $53,000 to $123,000 plus utilities. And I'll note that the county does not dictate these utility costs because they're often set by the individual utility providers, so they do vary widely. So this is the base cost plus utilities. The cost of tiny houses also drastically differ. Some people have built them for as little as $30,000 themselves, but if you were to go buy one from a manufacturer today, that could cost you between $60,000 to $100,000. And a tiny house as a secondary dwelling unit would be eligible for the same fees as any other secondary dwelling unit, except for school impact fees. The school districts charge their own fees, and per state law, school districts do not charge fees on any residential structures under 500 square feet. So overall, you can see that the tiny house could cost a similar amount as a stick-built house or slightly less. The biggest differences between these two scenarios is their installation time and the permanence. So you can roll in a tiny house, but it does take time to build a conventional structure on-site. And if you move, somebody could take their tiny house with them. And while this CTA does not address tiny houses as primary dwellings, that is where we could see the most cost savings in the future when you compare that to the average house cost in Placer County is over $400,000. And I'll just make one other note related to costs here is about taxes. Property would not incur extra property taxes based on a tiny house because it is transportable. However, they could incur extra taxes based on improvements such... made to the parcel itself, such as water, septic, or sewer. Tiny houses are being built throughout Northern California and in our county. This slide shows photos of Sac State students who built a tiny house for a SMUD competition, Sierra Tiny Houses, which is a manufacturer in Loomis, Wood Creek High School, where students are in a program to learn construction, and they're building tiny houses that are being used to house veterans, and Sierra College. Staff have conducted outreach on this ordinance since June. Staff has presented to all the municipal advisory councils as an informational item. The majority MACs were supportive of the proposal. We received valuable feedback from all of them. The Granite Bay MAC and community expressed substantial concern and provided feedback as well. We also presented twice to the Placer County Association of Realtors. We hosted a Planning Commission workshop here in July, and we've had several meetings and phone calls with individual stakeholders throughout the process. Additionally, at a housing forum presented by Placer County and the Placer Community Foundation this past March, and at a Mountain Housing Council think-take about one year ago, and in a recent county flash vote survey on housing, many community members have requested the county to allow tiny houses. During our outreach, we've received a variety of feedback, and so these are the most common topics that have been highlighted during this outreach process. So I did cover costs, so I won't go into details on that again. Impact fees would be assessed. However, the board could decide to waive the impact fees, as has been done for deed-restricted second dwelling units, farmworker housing, caretaker housing, hardship mobile homes, and mobile home parks. But that would be a board decision. School impacts were a concern, but as I described, this per state law, the school districts do not charge impact fees for residents under 500 square feet. Utility capacities were also a common concern. This is addressed in the ordinance, which requires tiny houses to connect to water or well and septic or sewer. So that is checked during zoning clearance, just like for every other residential structure that gets brought or proposed to the county. Staff checks that the parcel has adequate utility capacity during that process. Other concerns stemmed about addresses, particularly for emergency service providers. So the ordinance does require that an address would be provided with a tiny house, and that could be done with an electrical permit. Or in the case, if they're relying on solar and there is no electrical permit, that would be done at the sewer or septic permit level. And aesthetics were also another big issue. So we did include detailed standards to request that they are made of typical housing materials and so that they look like a conventional structure to maintain that residential character. And also, the county does not dictate aesthetics on other residential structures, so we don't recommend doing that in this instance either, although CCNRs for certain neighborhoods could certainly do that. Oh, excuse me. We also heard a number of comments from people for and against primary dwellings and tiny house communities. So like I said, those will be included in the tiny house... I'm sorry, the Housing Strategy and Development Plan ZTA that will be coming forward in the future. One other concern was the transient nature of tiny house occupants. The county does not dictate right now how long people must live in their homes, and we do recognize that even people who buy homes could move or sell as frequently as they wished. So this ordinance has not addressed that topic. And then code enforcement is our final topic that has come up frequently. And the current county protocol for any land use complaints is that co-compliant services would enforce regulations related to a variety of land use issues, and that would include tiny houses. The county has received many requests for tiny houses to be allowed in the Tahoe Basin and the Tahoe area in general because of the housing shortage in that region. To put tiny houses in the Tahoe Basin would require an amendment to the Tahoe Basin Area Plan. Staff has been talking and in frequent conversations with the Mountain Housing Council and Tahoe Regional Planning Agency to determine the steps needed to make that amendment, and so that's a process that we are moving forward in right now. So this ordinance would be exempt under section 15282H of the California Environmental Quality Act, which applies to adoption of an ordinance regarding second units in a single-family or multifamily residential zone. And staff recommends that the Planning Commission find these proposed code amendments to be exempt under those sequel guidelines, and to recommend the Board of Supervisors to amend the Placer County Code to establish regulations for tiny houses in zone districts where those land uses are already allowed. And with that, I'll conclude, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Emily. Any questions? It looks like Jeff answered.
As far as like, you know, in a... in an area where septic systems are in use for a secondary dwelling or a tiny house, does it require an independent septic system, or can it attach to the existing system if there's proven capacity?
I believe every septic system is looked at individually, so if their existing septic system has additional capacity, they could tap into that. If it does not have additional capacity, it would need to be expanded, or a separate system would have to be installed.
Use of generators with a tiny house, is that something that is allowable, or are they going to have to be tied into a permanent power system?
So our ordinance does talk about generators under... Let me find it in here. There is a requirement that they comply with the county's regulations pertaining to generators.
What page is that on, Emily?
I'm looking for that. That is on page 13 of your staff report, I believe. It's the last page of the ordinance.
And what do those regulators pertaining to generators cover? Is that...
It states that generators, when applicable, shall adhere to the Placer County Noise Ordinance and the Placer County Air Pollution Control District. So it's noise and air pollution related.
So will they need a permanent sewer and water hookup? They do not need an electrical hookup? They could be running off of the generator or solar or any other source as long as they're not making too much noise?
That is correct.
Okay. One more question, if I could. My understanding right now is if you are sizing a septic system to accommodate a secondary dwelling unit, the assumption is, whether it actually is or not, the assumption is that that secondary dwelling unit is a two-bedroom. Will that be maintained for tiny houses, even though they're probably not likely to and not going to have two bedrooms?
So I have talked with our environmental health department about this, and they said there is an opt... certainly an option that they could move forward with a smaller required... minimum requirement.
So that is being looked at?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
I think that's got what I needed, thank you.
Okay. Larry, did you have something? Sorry, you were on there.
Yeah, I just... One of the concerns that we've discussed briefly at TRPA along the same line is how are we going to police the use of it? In other words, is it going to be done so that it gives workforce housing for... Or is it going to be a rental unit for some vacation rental thing? So there's going to be a management issue for us at the county, I'm sure, at some point. How do we make sure that it's not being misused? Because right now, that's sort of a major issue everywhere that, you know, people are sympathetic to creating moderate and low-cost housing for people that really need it to work and live and exist. But if they're just driving up from San Francisco on the weekends and using it and sort of being obnoxious, the neighbors just don't like it, you know? And so it's going to... I don't know if some point, you're going to have to get into the policing of how they're used... can be used and not used, I guess.
So tiny houses would be treated the same as secondary dwelling units right now, so the second dwelling unit ordinance, it would point to that as far as the ability to rent it out for short-term uses. So it would apply the same... That ordinance would pertain to the tiny houses as well as the secondary dwelling units. So that is... that potential issue is one that would pertain beyond just tiny houses. It's pertaining to our secondary dwelling units throughout the county.
Nathan, did you have a question?
Emily, I just want to commend you. Thank you for the improved information on cost. And I really like the way that the questions unfolded in the staff report. It's very helpful to see those questions and responses to those, so thank you. I need help with clarification. When it... Since we removed the "on wheels" concept, if someone builds a tiny home without wheels in a secondary dwelling... Question eight talks about that tiny homes will be registered through the DMV. So would that home not need to be registered through... And then would they incur those extra taxes because it never had wheels?
So it's more that tires on the wheels could be prone to cracking if they're not being used often, and that they would have to be hidden anyways per the ordinance or skirted. And so it would still remain on the chassis. It's just that the actual wheels could be taken off, but they would need to be able to put back on to move it.
So if someone builds a tiny home without wheels and it's not on a chassis, it was never on wheels, they constructed it in their backyard, would they still have to register through the DMV?
If it's not on a chassis, it wouldn't meet our definition. They could build a tiny house on any platform they wanted, but if it doesn't meet this definition, then the other option is that it would have to be put on a permanent foundation and then meet the building code.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Emily, I think you probably have reached out to a lot of counterparts throughout, you know, California, trying to gather how things are going and how what people are doing regarding tiny houses. My understanding is that City of Fresno was one of the first to put an ordinance or a code in place to help facilitate tiny houses. And I think that was probably done within the last two years, and my understanding is that they've had zero applications for tiny houses, which is kind of interesting. Now, Placer County may be very different, I don't know, but it's... I'm wondering how much of this is a novelty or whether it's a... You know, really, there's a... Whether there really is a substantial need there. I mean, I'm not saying there isn't a need, but it's there really a substantial interest in getting that done. And I think I agree with Nathan. It was really helpful that you broke down and gave us some information related to the cost, because I think that was what we first asked you when you brought it to us, was that we couldn't understand how this cost is going to work versus actually putting a stick build in place. And I still question that because it appears to me that it's still... The cost of a tiny house is ultimately going to cost more than a stick build, more than likely. So I just wondered about this is really when people start running the numbers, whether they're really... Maybe that's what happened in Fresno, is people started running the numbers and finding that it wasn't economically sensible, but...
Yeah, I mean, I think that probably is the same question as to why we haven't been getting more second dwelling units built every year.
Right.
Either way, there is a substantial upfront cost.
Right.
And so the county is certainly thinking of ways to address that cost. We've been talking with Mountain Housing Council about how... What would incentivize people to build more ADUs, whether it's on a permanent foundation or it is a tiny house? Either way, you have a cost of some sort. So yeah, it kind of is a time test because we don't know why Fresno... Nobody has come forward in Fresno, even though it has been allowed, but it's probably a cost issue.
Yeah, I was going to ask you, has Fresno made concession on fees to help facilitate it, or are they doing the same normal fees that they would do for a stick-built house?
That's a good question. I don't remember right now.
Because I'm just wondering what the deterrent is there, whether we would experience the same here.
Right.
Again, I'm not trying to discourage any kind of alternate housing because we need as much as we can get here in Placer County, but I'm just wondering ultimately, is there... Is it really going to happen related to the costs? And is there anything that counts? And is there anything the county can do? And I think that's probably related to fees to help encourage this to happen.
Right.
Any other questions before we open it up to public comment on this? All right, Emily.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And as I've mentioned in the past on public comment, we'd ask you to keep your comments to three minutes. So again, the timer is up. You've got, when the green is on, you have two minutes. When it turns yellow, you have a minute to wrap it up. And then the red, we would ask, again, you to really wrap it up at that point. So, and if you could give your name, please, and.
Hi, my name is Johanna Padilla, and I'm a realtor of 28 years, from Santa Cruz County and Fresno. So I now reside here in Placer County for the last eight years, own property, selling property here, love it. Okay, there's a lot of difference between Placer and Fresno, so there you go on the tiny home thing. Well, not knocking Fresno, but, okay, so you guys got a letter here from Emily, who is also a realtor, and it was dated Thursday, July the 12th. It's exactly how I feel. So the demographics and lifestyles of living in a tiny home, as a realtor, I am bombarded these days with clients that are millennials. They don't want to be in debt for the next 30 years. So they want to buy a tiny home, and the cost of a tiny home is approximately, like she said, it's going to be anywhere from 60,000 to 80,000. All right? As far as the septic systems, most of these younger people don't want to tie into a septic system. There's, you know, Nevada County has their waterless toilets, which is where a lot of them are going. For, for energy, as far as propane and stuff like that, they have tanks they can bring in, but also for solar, it's $10,000 to $12,000 to completely equip a tiny home. So there lies people that want a home that they can afford, that they're not going to be in debt. I'm seeing young people that can't afford a $300, $400,000 mortgage, but they can, if they can get enough money together for eight, for an $80,000 tiny home. We also have older people, you know, that are single, not by choice, you know, women mostly is what I deal with, but they want to live in a home that they can go, take it to San Diego and go see their grandkids and maybe park it over there in one of the tiny home parks, and they do have a tiny home community in San Diego. And then they can move it wherever they want. Maybe they want to go to Arizona for four months, six months. But this is, if, there's a great need for this, and there's a great want. So I would ask you really to consider, you know, the lifestyles, the affordability, you know, living debt-free is where, is where a lot of these people are at. They don't want a 2,000-square-foot home. They don't even want a 1,500, and they sure as heck don't want to live in an apartment or condos. And then if, I would really encourage you to consider the tiny house communities. Why not? We already have mobile homes. Sorry, I guess I'm up. But, you know, we're not trying to invent the will here. It's already been invented. This is just the 2018 version of a mobile home park and affordable housing, you know? And my heart goes out to these people, because it all depends on what you guys vote on, whether they can have mom and dad live on their property, or mom, dad died, you know, or, you know, the parents, that they have these young college kids, and they came home from college, they can't afford to buy a house, they can't afford anything, but they can afford to put them in a tiny home. And they don't want to live with mom and dad, and nor do mom and dad want them to live with them. So it's really answers a lot of questions, you know, or a lot of need. So please consider it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Maryweather Bloom. I'm a Newcastle resident, and I am of the younger people representing the tiny house movement. I do not want to live in a city. I don't like it. I prefer the rural living, and I'm trying to integrate myself into the small-town environment. But the problem with that is, one, small towns don't normally have the big bucks. Normally, you go to the city to do that, and then you come back and you buy the big house. That costs a lot of money. It'd be nice if there's a way to circumvent that and where the youth don't have to leave the small town constantly, where they are able to stay out in their communities, in the rural regions, and yet at the same time, purchase their own homes. Once we get to a point where they could be the primary residences on lands, that would be the best. But insofar as stands now, even if I was able, I could buy my own tiny home, I would still be owning it. So even though I might be renting a spot somewhere, I'd have my home, and I could maintain that consistency for as long as I wanted that to be my dwelling unit. And so it would provide a different opportunity for a demographic to stay home and not have this constant flight where we have to go to Sacramento, go to the Bay Area, go beyond in search of the normal rat race, in order to be able to maybe come back once we have kids, once we have families, to live the lifestyle that we prefer living. So if you guys can be supportive of the tiny housing, that would definitely be a wonderful thing. I'm excited at the opportunity and the revolution that Placer County could actually be leading, and the forethought that we could show other communities by accepting this. Instead of calling them tiny houses, they're just houses. The other ones could be considered gargantuan, overbloating, ostentatious, terrible things. So it's just a matter of mindset and being okay with it. So tiny houses, just calling them houses, they're homes. So hopefully, the Placer County can support that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, my name is Alex Navaris, and I bought a tiny home, but I put the cart before the horse. So I'm getting a lot of red tape out of this. So my mother-in-law is very sick, and we purchased one to put her in that dwelling. And instead of sending her to assisted living, we thought it would be better for her to live with us and have her space so she can do whatever she wants. And I'm just hitting a lot of red tape. But I, I support that tiny home to help family members come in. And as far as, as far as kids, I got six kids that are going to college, and it helps them out, too.
The red tape that you're hitting is because we don't have a policy on it right now?
Yeah.
Is that an issue? And so, so what are they specifically pushing back on?
Well, I'm having to come out with fees and as far as site specifics and, yeah, setbacks, but I got, it's all, it's all in order. Me and this young lady right here is working through it, so. But I support the tiny houses for home assistance on family members and.
Hopefully, some clarity is coming.
I hope so, too. I brought in Mr. Davis, and he's very knowledgeable about this tiny home, so thank you very much.
Hey, thanks for your comment. Anyone else want to get up and talk about it?
Good morning, my name is Sandy Harris, and I live in Granite Bay. I just want to address some issues that the people in Granite Bay have with this. About 78% of this county will be exempt from this ordinance. Granite Bay was officially recognized by the Board of Supervisors in 1989 when a community plan was adopted. We have our own school district, fire department, water company. We are an established community with an updated community plan, and we should be exempted as our incorporated areas, because basically, we have a plan for our area, and I see you're going to amend the Tahoe plan. I think you would have to bring our community plan back and have it amended somehow. 59% of Granite Bay is zoned .9 to 20-acre zoning and consists of 22 square miles. Allowing this type of housing could have an environmental impact on our established community plan. The proposal notes that subdivisions with CCNRs prohibiting this type of housing are exempted. There are many areas in Granite Bay that don't have organized homeowners associations, and there are those other older subdivisions without this provision. New subdivisions have the ability to eliminate tiny houses and tiny houses on wheels. This is poor planning and discriminatory. Are these tiny houses being subsidized by already overburdened taxpayers? Who will inspect construction? When will they monitor the building of the accessory structures? Restrictions might sound good on paper, but who will enforce code enforcement's already overburdened with code violations complaints? How will complaints be handled? How long before action and resolution? Will there be challenges from people claiming that these small vacation trailers are similar? Will this end up in a court at taxpayers' expense? Will variances to setbacks be granted, as happens regularly? They are subject to utility and impact fees and charges unless exempted by county code. What does that mean? What fees? Who decides? Neighbors must be noticed, especially since there will be so much outdoor living associated with these small dwellings. County must facilitate public's ability to lodge complaints, provide staff to conduct timely complaint investigations, ensure effective resolution of citizen complaint violations, have a system of fees for code violations to facilitate compliance with codes. County is already in compliance with the latest state mandates. Tiny houses and tiny houses on wheels were not mandated, and I'm particularly opposed to the ones on wheels. Tiny houses are relatively new, and long-term impacts are unknown. There is a saying, "Be not the first by whom the new are tried, nor yet the last to lay the oldest side." There's no support for this concept when it was presented at a well-attended Granite Bay MAC. Please do not recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors. This proposal is unfamiliar, is unfair to communities with established, adopted general plans and impacts a small portion of county residents unfairly. Thank you.
Sandy, have you submitted that in writing? Those specifics you have? You can give it to the clerk. Anyone else like to get up and speak on it?
Good morning, well, good afternoon. I want to thank, my name is Chris Johnson. I live in Granite Bay. I am very, very concerned about our housing situation. I also have a second home that I share with another family in Tahoe, and I was one that submitted a lot of the issues that I saw related to tiny houses on wheels. Setting that aside, what I really, really, really want to know is, when will we get to the point where we want to do a tiny house community? Because that's really what these people are looking for. The issue that someone brought up about, well, they had these in Fresno, and nobody's built one, because the idea of a secondary dwelling unit, you know, does it pencil out? Does it really solve the problem? And the, the one issue I really think we have to look very hard on is how we kind of stagger the, the code between one on wheels, once you take the wheels off and you set it on the ground, now it's under the, the regular, you know, building codes and zoning, which adds the cost, I believe, of sprinkler systems and so on. So we've got to figure out how we're going to stagger that, because the reality is, somebody gets a permit for, for a tiny house on wheels, they, they get it, oh, a few months later, they take it off, they set it on a foundation, and suddenly, maybe it's on a tiny, you know, it's, it's under a different code. So I think we really need to comprehend, you know, the fire issues and so forth and so on. But I am supportive of the idea of tiny homes. A lot of professional people, like my daughter, who's a schoolteacher, who makes $43,000 a year, she could afford something like this, but it needs to be in a community. So what I'm asking you guys to come up with, and you guys are the leaders, let's, let's set a date when we're going to have a game plan for tiny home community. Thank you.
If you could just hang on just for a second. Emily, I think, mentioned that this is the, the community part of this, because we're actually just, this part of this is just addressing on an individual parcel. But coming forward is going to be where we look at it from a, a proposal for a community. Is that right, Emily? And can you tell us what the date of when that might happen?
Yes, so county staff right now are developing the Housing Strategy and Development Plan zoning text amendment, and that is a much larger zoning text amendment that will address a variety of housing issues to remove constraints and facilitate more how, different, more development of different types of housing. So right now, staff is pretty close to wrapping up that description, but we're still fleshing that out.
So early mixed, you would say?
Yeah, we're still in the process of just beginning.
Okay. So basically, we're talking about around 2019. And again, you know, this is, these type of developments could be comprehended in some of these larger developments. There's no reason why developers, as part of their total plan, couldn't build communities of tiny houses. And also, you know, different, different, other organizations that, that build homes for lower income, this would be an opportunity. But we really need to have zoning or areas set aside that say, hey, you know, this area could be for tiny houses, and would need to have the, the facilities that, that support that.
Right. I would agree that the way to get this more feasible is to have them cluster, to have a clustered tiny home community.
Yes.
And it gives a sense of community to the people that live there as well. So I think that's certainly a good point. So thank you for your comment.
Well, like Habitat for Humanity, I would imagine, you know, if, if they had a designated parcel of land and we had the zoning and so on in place, it could happen quickly and we could solve a lot of problems. Thank you all.
Thank you. Anyone else like to get up and comment on this? All right, come forward.
Before I start, could I ask Emily to please put your comment discussion topics back on the screen?
If you could give us your, your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. Before we start timing, my name is Gene Davis. I'm the president of Reliable Home Solutions.
Okay.
If I, I don't have anything.
If you give it to the clerk. Is that the slide that you were asking for?
Yes.
Okay. Looks like we need one more. If you've got. No, that's all right, we've got one. All right, I guess we're set.
To give you some background, I've been a housing advocate for 25 years. We've worked with doing housing, working with Habitat for Humanity. We've worked with Sacramento County. I designed the first home for a family with HIV-positive. We designed in the Auburn area, you have a, you have a transitional housing community called Acres of Hope. We built and supplied all the housing for Acres of Hope. I want to thank you for having this meeting today. I want to thank you for letting me address you. I absolutely applaud your efforts to improve the housing opportunities for people that are, that have issues with the affordability, with mobility, with just, whether they're elderly or even the young people today. In respect to the cost of, and I will go right down your, your line, with respect to the cost of, and I'm specifically here to ask you to adhere to the recommendations of HCD, who I've been working with on their accessory dwelling unit rules and regulations, which is Senate Bill 1069. And I'm asking you to add to the, to your ordinance that, that park-model recreational trailers be officially recognized and accepted as an ADU or, and/or a tiny house. With respect to costs, we're, we're running an entry-level park-model cottage would be about $40,000. Your impact fees, it's under 400 square feet, because it is a DMV licensed unit, it is on a chassis. With respect to the, having a permanent foundation, we have designed a mobile home tie-down permanent foundation for our park-model cottages, so in compliance with the building departments, whether we put it on a permanent seismic, seismic-protected foundation, it would work. With respect to addresses, I don't have an issue there. Our, our units, if you go on our website, which is on my card, they look exactly like a ski chalet. They can be primary dwelling units. My. My big issue for the last 25 years is doing housing for the elderly. And we have, if any of you have a parent, a relative who is in need of care, and you can't afford the $6,000 to $7,000 a month for assisted living facility, you can put one of our tiny houses or a park model cottage on your property to be able to take care of a parent. Thirty percent of my business, and we have a family over here, and the last page that I've shown you on that, on the handout I gave you, is somebody in agony because these families have come to building departments all over California and specifically to answer Fresno's issue. Fresno, I have several clients going into Fresno County now. Fresno City is all for the tiny house/park model opportunity. However, when I talk to the building department in Fresno, the county, they sent me HCD requirements that go back to 2015 that have no application because they are superseded by Senate Bill 1069. Lastly, I'm working still with HCD. And to your counsel and to your planning director, HCD is right at the cusp of proposing that park model cottages, tiny houses, be accepted for your RENA quotas. And that's going to come out here pretty quick. So when you have, when you're looking at getting your funding for different, you know, for utilities, for different things, roads, sewers, et cetera, and you haven't met your affordable housing challenges, the park model cottages, which are built in the same assembly line as a manufactured or modular house, two-by-four, et cetera, and they are, other than being 399 square feet, as opposed if it was, a park model was 401, we wouldn't have an issue. So thank you, and God bless all of you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Paul, I have one.
Sure.
You said park model, and we've had information here between what a tiny house looks like, an RV, and I have a small trailer, so I kind of know what they look like. And that's, they're at the opposite sides of spectrum. Now, a park model, does it look like a house?
Park models, yes. They look like, whether it's a permanent recreational trailer, they, you can go on my website and see them.
I'll look later on.
And they're beautiful. They are too, I have double wides, triple wides, four park models in a row. I then have a modular on the same assembly line with, and by the way, I do personally represent my company for the last 15 years, Silvercrest Homes, Champion Homes, Fleetwood Homes, Cavco Homes, and Skyline. Those are the major manufacturers of manufactured housing in California. I'm an established dealer developer for all of them. I also have my RV dealer's license because, and able to supply a DMV product, you have to be licensed as a DMV dealer, and I am. So we're contractors, HCD dealers, and RV dealers, just to be able to bring a unit to you. They are two-by-four construction, the same walls.
That's fine, but my heart of my question is, does it meet this code as far as what it looks like?
Yes, absolutely, 100%.
I'll look, I'll look later on your website, but that's what I really durn in on.
Anders, you have a question?
Question, how large are the park models?
399 square feet.
So that would, so why is it not going to be allowed under the zoning ordinance proposed?
Well, because there is a caveat in the way you've written the law. The building departments, and I've seen this all through California, we meet every criteria, but because it's built under ANSI code, which your ordinance addresses, the fact that they were originally put into RV parks says that you cannot occupy it for more than 30 days. So the letter that you have that I received, because I'm working with HCD, and in the bottom highlighted area, it says, "Will the cities and counties officially recognize park model recreational trailers as an ADU or and/or as a tiny house?" So it's that one little caveat that I'm not only dealing with today here, but in every city and county in California that I've been dealing with. And we've been doing it now for 10 years, and we have, we've helped many, many families.
So I guess I'm not clear. What is the difference between a tiny house and a park model that is prohibiting you from putting a unit as a second dwelling?
Well, the building departments most likely have put roadblocks as far as how long you can live in it, the size of it. That's been the issue. Nothing else.
And why?
Because it was, because it comes under DMV rules and regulations, and then people bring the floor plans into, to the building department, and the building department says, well, you have to have it on a permanent foundation. So being a creative individual, I took a manufactured housing permanent foundation, which is seismically tested, and then redesigned it to be state-approved and wet-stamped to be able to have a permanent foundation on a tiny house. Well, I had to go through all those steps to get through building departments. You go back to Fresno, Fresno City will allow this, but Fresno County will not, as of today's date. All right?
I guess I'm still confused.
I'm sorry, I'm not explaining it perfectly.
If I, if I, we do have Jeff Thomas with our building division here, who may be able to speak to this matter if he's willing.
Somebody else has a mic or a stereo.
Just step up to the podium, Jeff.
Terminator, commissioners, how you doing? I'm Jeff Thomas with the building department. The building department, Placer County, I can't, I don't want to speak for other jurisdictions, but I believe in what this gentleman is saying, is the other building departments are probably trying to regulate those in a manner of which, where an RV would not be allowed. So Placer is trying to do this where individuals are out of the building code. The building code can't touch these things because they're an RV, they're a DMV vehicle. We don't regulate that. We, you know, the permanent foundation aspect comes from a structure, which if you want to do an efficiency dwelling unit, you pour a foundation, you stick frame it on it. That's the aspect where these building departments are probably coming from, where if you do a manufactured home, more commonly known as a mobile home, you go put it on private property, you set it on peers. The state has designed peers to where those can be considered a permanent foundation, fixed real property, so they go through that process. Well, HCD has designed that for those purposes. HCD does not regulate these for residential occupancy outside of a mobile home park or an RV park. Somebody can live in these things in an RV park indefinitely, in a mobile home park indefinitely. But if somebody wants to get these outside of the building, outside of an RV park, then it has to be built for the building codes. These things can't be built for the building code, at least on the surface. I mean, somebody could come out, engineer a foundation system that has some sort of trailer-type, you know, floor system, potentially it could be movable if they wanted to design, an engineer could design it, but it would have to meet every aspect of the building code, the energy code, the green code, all these things that make these really prohibitive in that kind of a capacity. So I'm suspecting that these other jurisdictions aren't looking at it in an avenue that Placer has, which, and a few other jurisdictions in the state, which is, we'll make it a zoning text amendment, allowing basically RVs, but they have to be these, you know, park model RVs that look like a home, you know, on certain properties within a county outside of a mobile home park or an RV park.
And if I might just, and I applaud what you guys are doing, this is the permanent foundation that I've designed. It's an XI2, and I have no issue with you, with your board. I'm here, I have a customer who's trying to take care of his parent, who we've been dealing with for several months, to try to get through the process of being able to accept a park model recreational trailer to be placed on his property. I've done this over and over again. What we have here is that you guys are, your board in the county is being so incredibly proactive to address the problem. But HCD, when they were brought in to put the chief in Senate Bill 1069, the majority of the, when they sent, when they sent notification, gave all the cities and counties 90 days to comply. The majority of the counties came back and said, you know what, we're going to protect our fiefdoms, and we're going to do it the way we've been doing it, and they made subtle changes. And so when I, when I was able to get the letter from HCD Legal, which you have in your possession, that goes back to September of 2017, that says park model cottages should be accepted. I don't have an issue with that. My small portion here is that I'd just like you to please word that park model cottages or park model recreational trailers are part of your ordinance. Okay? That would, that would be wonderful. Then we can go about our business.
Well, I think as long as they're not going on a permanent foundation, because then that's where obviously county code gets more specific. As long as they're still on, have axles under them.
They do.
Then, you know, then as Jeff said, they're part of DMV, and that, you know, is something completely different than a stick build or something that's going to go on a permanent foundation.
Well, see, here's another, if I might.
Yes, sure.
Here's the, here's another caveat. Park model recreational trailer is being built on the same assembly line, so you're two-by-four construction. Everything that's in a manufactured house is in a park model cottage, other than one square foot. All right? So it takes a licensed transporter, they are DMV licensed, they're on a chassis, but because of the weight and the width, they're 11 feet wide by approximately 34 feet long. So, and because of the weight in that they're 15, 16,000 pounds, not the tiny houses, which go behind a Toyota pickup truck, it takes a licensed transporter to put them in place. Okay? So again, a DMV product, they're on chassis, they have wheels, but because, so if you say in your ordinance, well, it has to be hooked up behind my trailer, I'm afraid we're going to get some building person who will say, well, no, because it's a park model cottage, it only can be used for, in an RV park. And that isn't, that isn't what we want. Doesn't work.
So the big difference between these park model RVs that he's talking about and say a tiny home, which they're basically synonymous, and then the manufactured home, which you see placed in mobile home park or in private property on peers, is that the manufactured home is regulated by Title 25. Stick-built, stick-frame homes are built by Title 24 of the California Code of Regulations. These park model RVs, the tiny homes, they're constructed per standards, not per code. And so that's the difference where a building department can't really go in and say, okay, you've got this park model RV, and we're going to allow you to put a permanent foundation under it, connect it to the ground, because then we're connecting a vehicle to the ground, not a home that was built per state codes.
May I? The way the law reads today, as far as an accessory dwelling unit to be placed on a piece of property made by a manufactured housing manufacturer, and let's just say Silvercrest as an example, because you've probably already all have heard of Silvercrest. The only difference between a park model recreational trailer and any product that is acceptable by any city-county jurisdiction in California, between a park model recreational trailer DMV and a manufactured home is one square foot. Okay? One square foot. Because by law, to keep our DMV regulate, our DMV compliance, we have to be under 400 square feet, which we are, up to 399 and not a foot bigger. If I built that same floor plan and stretched it to make it 403 square feet, then it comes under HUD jurisdiction, and the building departments don't have any jurisdiction over the product when it goes on top of the land, if it's a HCD unit, because we comply with a national building code. Now, the one exception to that is sprinkler systems and woo-ee, because you have, I believe, woo-ee regulations up here. So we just simply check the box and say tempered glass, one-hour fire rated, California green, et cetera, et cetera, ad infinitum. It's again, I'm battling for my families that I keep having to go to bat for, for one square foot. Okay?
All right.
Yeah, just really quickly on that, unfortunately, the difference in that one square foot, as he alluded to, is HCD does not regulate the 399 and less. It's under a standard. So HCD comes in when it hits 400, and that is the smallest manufactured home that they produce. They're very rare. You have a special one.
Can I ask the building department?
Yeah.
Does the unit, since you're familiar with this person's product, 399 square foot park model, whatever you want to call it, that looks okay, I mean, looks okay, it looks like a residential unit, will it, does it, will it, can it be installed under this zoning text amendment? No?
I'd have to look at that wordage specifically that it is referring to, but those do meet the ANSI and NFPA standards.
Yeah, we are building ANSI.
So that's, that in itself, yes, they would comply. If there is a little language tweaking or something that could be done.
They would comply with our zoning text amendment for tiny homes.
Yeah. And park, park model RVs are the only RV other than the regular type of RV that you see driving around, the typical RV, are the only type of RV that are allowed in RV parks. A typical tiny home isn't allowed in an RV park. It has to be a park model RV, so.
Anders, did you get your questions answered?
Yeah, so, tell me if I'm wrong, but it sounds like, under the code as being proposed, if the park model is kept on wheels and brought in, it could be done. But if you wanted to put it on a permanent foundation, we have a whole different set of regulations that would have to be complied with.
Could not do that.
Could not, but you could, if you kept it on the wheels and put it in as a tiny home.
We always leave it on the wheels to keep DMV designation.
The subtlety is purely.
I totally understand.
Okay. But this code does not prohibit you then from putting a park model home as a secondary unit. Is that correct?
Could I ask one question to clarify? So to both of you, if, would, if we added language to the CTA to specifically state that park model trailers would be an example of a tiny house, is that all you're suggesting we do?
That would be an absolute beautiful gift.
And that, Jeff, is in line with everything else we have?
Yeah, for us, we won't, we don't regulate that aspect of it, so it won't matter, you know, simply. The only thing would just be making sure that they meet those standards that qualify them to be an RV. So as long as they meet those standards, then they meet the ordinance.
And this is to the board, so you'll know. We started 10 years ago, the tiny house movement here in California, because if you went to their website 10 years ago and you saw their pictures, they would be my park models. The problem that I had with tiny houses at the beginning, and they've come, they've come light years, light years forward in reference to how they're built. In the beginning, your bearing wall was a three-quarter inch plywood bearing wall, your toilet was a composting toilet, your water supply was a three-gallon water jug. Today, a park model cottage is a stick-built house on wheels. It hooks up to, it has a 50 amp breaker system. It hooks up to your septic or your sewer. It can do natural gas and/or propane, our whirlpool appliances, you know, a shock carpeting, hardwood cabinets, you name it, it's in, it's a stick-built house. Okay? Yes.
So question, then, with your stick-built house, I know your typical RV, you can't go to Home Depot and get a new toilet for.
Oh, no, 100%. We are, we are 100% Lowe's and Home Depot interchangeable on a park model cottage. It is not, it is not built like a trailer, like an old-fashioned mobile home trailer. These are houses. Okay? So if you want to get a screen door, you need a good new front door, you want to get new dual pane windows, you want to get, change your carpeting out, you want to change your, it doesn't really matter. Oh, and the PEX water systems.
So then, typical residents, for instance, code says in a bedroom, you have to have a window of a certain size as an emergency point of ingress.
Ingress and egress windows, yes.
Still meet all those qualifications.
Absolutely, 100%.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you so much. I sincerely appreciate your time. God bless you all.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Okay, I'll bring it back. As long as there's no other public comment? Okay? Close. Close public comment?
Before we close public comment, let's just make sure there's.
Oh, yeah, that's right. I want to see, is anybody up there?
The room is completely empty.
All right. Then we're good. Okay, public comment is closed. All right, I'll bring it back to the commission for any discussion or action.
I guess it's a point of discussion. I think one of the reasons, and I don't know that just saying to fix it is going to do anything but maybe create more problems than it cures, but one of the reasons that you probably don't see too many applications for this or other secondary dwelling units
probably don't see too many applications for this or other secondary dwelling units is the setback issue. Not wanting it right on top of your existing residence and wanting to distance it a little and still being able to keep a backyard or a side yard setbacks consistent with what's in your community, I think eliminates a lot of parcels from qualifying for it. In the rural areas where parcels are larger, well, your tiny house may be affordable, the land costs, I think, are going to prohibit you from utilizing them when they become allowable as a primary residence. But looking at housing for like college students, there's a lot of landlords who don't want to rent to students, and there's a lot of apartments who won't even let a parent be a cosigner unless they're going to physically occupy the apartment also. So I see the need, I see the desire to fill the need, but I don't think if this is passed that you're going to see a substantial number of these being applied to go in and accomplish what the desire is to accomplish unless, lest the rules change.
Other comments?
Well, yeah, I agree with what you're saying, and I think, I think we're trying to move forward in so housing issue without having all the information and all the numbers and having everybody on the same page. I just, you know, it's going to be, the area that I represent, which happens to be Lake Tahoe, we have the strictest homeowners' rules and zoning things and regional governments and stuff. There's a lot of, a lot of stuff, snow load. How do you, how do you deal with snow loads? They're not going to, they're not currently, I don't believe, prepared to deal with that issue. So I think while, I think the idea is conceivable and good, we're not quite there yet. I think there's still, I think they need to create a whole new box of issues and allowances that everybody can use and work with and understand. Right now, I don't think we're there yet, you know, even though the basic idea is good, but how we're going to get there is not solved.
Any comment?
No, it's okay. You're. I have just a point. I'm really interested in the affordability concept, because if young people think they might buy a home of this sort and then 10 years later try to sell it, is the affordability still there if they lose $20,000, $50,000 in the depreciation?
Right.
And so part of, part of the concern is affordability means something different when you go and try to sell something after purchasing it. And so I'm just wondering about that versus a stick-built home in affordability, the appreciation versus depreciation in a DMV item is a question mark that I still have in my mind. So I'm just wondering about how affordable something is in the long term with something like this.
That's an important consideration when they're sitting down and figuring out all the numbers on this on the long-term. But I have to agree with something that certainly Jeff made, and with regards, I'm sorry, I've closed the public comment at this point, it's up to the commission, is that if somebody wants to have this in a rural area and they're going to buy a parcel to do this, you're, they're ultimately going to spend probably more with the county requirements as regards to a septic system and putting a well in, then they're going to probably spend more money on that than they will on the actual unit itself. So it's going to be, I think, once the numbers start running, it's going to be a challenge. That's why I still believe that these tiny house communities are really the best approach to this, but that's my own bias. Anyway, any other comments or action you want to take? Action? We got it out? Anybody want to?
I'll make a motion. That we find the proposed code amendments to be exempt under Sequel Guidelines, Section 1520, 15 to 82.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we've got a second. All right, roll call, Sue.
I have a first by Mr. Haugie, a second by Mr. Rokucci.
Yes.
Mr. Haugie.
Yes.
Mr. Hersag.
Yes.
Mr. Rokucci.
Yes.
Mr. Severson.
Yes.
Mr. Moss.
Yes.
Mr. Nader.
Yes.
Thank you.
And before we go to the next one, I was going to ask county council, Emily and Crystal, whether we need to modify this a little bit based on some of the discussion we just had, so.
Yes, if the commission would like to, we could add the park trailer clarification to the zoning text amendment.
Okay.
It would need to be made by a motion, obviously.
A separate motion?
It could be incorporated, right?
It could be incorporated into this motion.
Okay. Then I'd make a motion to recommend to the board of supervisors to amend Placer County Code, Chapter 17, Article 1704, 1756, and adding Article 1756, Section 1756, 350, to establish regulations for tiny houses in zone districts where those land uses are already allowed, subject to the findings contained in this report, and including additional definition of park model home.
Is that acceptable? Yes, it is? Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Movement seconded, Sue, roll call, please.
I have a first by Mr. Haugie, a second by Mr. Rokucci. Mr. Haugie.
Yes.
Mr. Hersag.
Yes.
Mr. Rokucci.
Yes.
Mr. Severson.
Yes.
Mr. Moss.
I think I need to know more, so no.
And Mr. Nader.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, well, that concludes this item on our agenda, which actually concludes our agenda at this point. So thank you, everybody, and thank you for your patience as we were delayed in this whole pri-